The time being 6:00 PM. It's Tuesday, November 18th. I'll call this meeting to order. This section here will be a public hearing on the 2015 County Dayton Budget. Notice has been given that the hearing will be held at this stated time. The proposed budget in detail was available for inspection in the clerk's office. And we'll run through it up on the screen. And many of you have a handout with the details. The summary was posted in the Wapakia County Post on two occasions?
Three.
Three occasions. And it was also posted at the town meeting notice locations. You have a roll?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, there's three columns as you go down. The first column was the 2014 actual expenses year-to-date as of September when the budget was prepared. The second column is the October to December expected expenditures during that period. There's only one change and we'll go over that later. The third column then is the 2014 expected total. The fourth column was the 2014 budget. The next column is the 2015 proposed budget. And the last column is the 2013 actual expenses for comparison purposes. The first section is the town taxes, general property taxes, also includes personal property taxes. And that amount is budgeted to be $565,944, which is a decrease from the expected 2014 taxes and a slight increase over the 2013 actual taxes.
Can I ask what the budget was for 2013?
That's up there, sir.
No, that's what the actually was.
Oh, the budget for 2013? The budget, I don't have those numbers. Next section is intergovernmental revenues, state shared revenues, and the fire insurance tax. The fire insurance tax amount is a pass-through to the fire department, but the check comes to the Town of Dayton and the Town of Dayton then writes that amount out to the Wapakia If anybody has any questions as we go down? It's a large room, we've got a lot of people in here. If you could kind of politely interrupt because I'm reading off of a small laptop here and I may not see someone with their hand up.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why does that number jump by a half million dollars from 2013 to 2014?
Which number were you looking at?
You're talking about the intergovernmental revenues?
Intergovernmental revenues.
2013 was 258. 2015 is 73?
We're not there yet. You're talking about the total for intergovernmental revenues that's numbered out here. And we'll go over that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'm still up here. State shared revenues.
Got it.
State shared taxes. Okay. We share expenses with the Town of Farmington for the Chana Lakes Water Patrol. Those expenses are reimbursed through a DNR grant. And so we have a budgeted item for the water patrol. The general transportation aids is one of the larger revenues. That is increased to go up. In 2015, the legislature slightly increased the per-mile reimbursement rate for transportation Payments in lieu of taxes.
Chris, could you do me a favor just because I'm slow and I read slow? Could you give me the number you're talking about along the side as we go? Would that be okay? Because I'm having trouble bouncing up and down. You know, the numbers you got right next to it, like 43, 500, 43, 500.
Well, are you looking at the 2015 budgeted number you'd like me to read off or?
I'm not talking about the expense. I'm talking along the side here, the columns as we go down. But you just need to read me those numbers because I'm having trouble following. I'm trying to follow them.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
43, 610, payments for municipal services. 43, 620, payment in lieu of taxes.
Can you tell us who that is? Paid the $1,270.
All of those are state payments.
So those are not a non-taxable entity making a payment in lieu of real estate taxes?
No, that would be under personal property taxes.
No.
No.
Oh. No, I'm sorry. We do not have any payments received from nonprofit entities.
Do you have any in this town?
Pardon me?
Any non-taxable?
Parkville Church. Parkville Church.
Yeah, things like churches, cemeteries don't pay taxes.
But there's no other, no other, other churches and cemeteries in that state?
Well, as an example, the Camp Playhorn, the real estate is owned by a nonprofit entity.
Have you ever approached them about making a payment in lieu of taxes?
The homes and the improvements to Camp Playhorn are taxed as personal property taxes.
But the value of the real estate is not?
The value of the real estate is not. That's correct. And that's the way the state statutes are set up. Yes.
Does Playhorn like pay property taxes to anybody else?
Yeah, they pay install.
I stand corrected. I thought that, I thought that Camp Playhorn was taxed exactly.
No, they pay a big property tax.
Is there multiple tax penalties or just one thing? Because it's.
Okay, Camp Playhorn is treated as one large property.
That's what, Boot Bowl sector?
Yeah.
Yes. They pay one payment, they have one tax bill, but then like Chris said, within Camp Playhorn, there is personal property taxes which they pay individually. So we do receive a lot of tax money from that entity and the people there.
I was just curious about the real estate.
Going back, 43, 610, payment for municipal services. 43, 620, payment in lieu of taxes. Our others, those are state payments, primarily an adjustment for the property that has been purchased by the state for various DNR lands and for Hartman Creek State Park. 43, 640 and 43, 645 are forest cropland payments. We have a multiple variety of forest croplands in the state's tax system. Generally, the property taxes on those properties are very low, but when they harvest the forest lands, then there's a payment made to the town. So.
Did any agricultural lands convert into residential?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The agricultural lands that are valued at use rather than value, when they change, did we have any of those in the last two years?
We may have. That's part of the assessment rolls. The state calculates that after the assessor finishes the tax roll for the year.
But all those money flow back to the township, correct? On agricultural, what goes into residential use and all those, when they were taxed at less than the market value based on these, we make convert, all those dollars flow back to the township, correct?
No.
Not entirely.
No. For agricultural land, there's no penalty to convert to non-agricultural land. For forest croplands, there's a special property tax break that's written into the tax codes. And there can be a penalty depending on the program that the people were enrolled in. A couple of years ago, and I think it was probably 2012, we received about $80,000 as a penalty when a large tract on West Stratton Lake, on Stratton Lake Road was converted from a managed forest land to cropland. So the farmer that purchased that paid a tax penalty at that point. If it's converted to anything other than forest land, then the tax penalty is paid at that Okay. So severance yield forest croplands are all dollar amounts that we get when forest products are harvested. 43, 600, other state payments is $10,000 in the budget anticipating a DNR grant to improve the boat landings at Spencer Lake and Stratton Lake. Those two ramps have been programmed for a couple of years. There's still a ownership issue with the Stratton Lake boat landing that hasn't been resolved yet with Wapakia County. And until that's straightened out, we can't work on the ramps.
You've got a grant in there for $240,000?
The $240,000 includes the $10,000 for the DNR grants for the boat landings. It includes $180,000 as a highway program grant, which the state calls a trip grant, Town Road Improvement Program. Thank you. And actually, it's a TRIPD grant, which is Town Road Improvement Discretionary, where the state had to, excuse me, I thought I turned this off. And that also includes $50,000 in a DNR grant for the removal of the Little Hope Dam. The other amount, county highway and bridge grant, $420,000 for the replacement of the three bridges that are in process. Two on West Road, one over Emmons Creek, one over Radley Creek, and one on Dayton Road over Radley Creek. So that's the reason for the major increase in the intergovernmental revenues.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I spent the morning talking with Patterson about $180,000. I understand that. You're telling me the difference between 240 and 180 is the 50 grand that's not listed here from the DNR. You're just including it there. Correct?
Well, it has not been applied for yet? Is that what you're?
You're right. So why would that be then part of other state payments and in fact, it's not even applied for? Right now, the state owes $179,600,000 on your account for the tragedy that's going on on West Road down there. Looks really nice. Thank you. In the meantime, we haven't applied for that. Why would that be included under state payments? Other state payments, that's the difference. Chances are, you're not going to get it. Why would you put it here? Just wanted to continue to fibs. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on.
Are you saying that the $240,000 is a completely publicized grant?
No, what I said is that there's a $180,000 grant that has been approved for West Road. It also includes an anticipated grant of $50,000, which Mr. Ellis so eloquently spoke about, and a $10,000 grant for the improvement of the boat landings at Spencer Lake and at Stratton Lake. Those two grants also have not been applied for yet, but it's anticipated that that work will be done in the 2015 budget year. So we disclose that when we put the budget together.
The $50,000 grant for the road, we don't own that dam.
That's correct. And we don't own the Stratton Lake boat landing yet either. But we anticipate.
But that's been approved.
What's been approved?
$10,000.
No.
$10,000 for the.
We can't apply for it until the ownership is straightened out. And I've been working, trying to get the county board to sign off on that for over two years.
How can you budget for things that you don't know if they're happening or not?
Well, we don't know if it's going to snow in January, but we're going to budget for it because we expect that there will be snow in January.
I think I'd rather have money in my pocket and then budget.
Well, that's how budgets work.
You could help the budgeting process like somebody else. He wasn't really talking.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I do not think that's the way all budgets work. And I'd like to see who's in charge of the accounting procedures exactly.
Well, the budget was put together by the town board. The town board is ultimately responsible for the budgeting process. And we use the format that the state of Wisconsin gives us.
Are we as electors allowed to remove things from the budget?
No.
We do have control over the dollar amount, is that correct?
The electors vote on the tax levy.
We do not vote on the amount of the budget?
You vote on the tax levy.
Angela, can we also vote on the transportation portion?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have some control.
Let me go to James here.
Chris, I think that $50,000, it seems like it's premature if it should ever go in. Because if you're going to apply for that, you're probably not going to do that for quite a while yet. The way this is.
Well, if it's done in the 2015 calendar year, would you rather that the town board amended the budget at a later time or disclose that when we meet about it? And I have no problem with that because there is a budget item as an expense and a budget item as a grant. The two go together.
Chris? So for $50,000, you talked about the Stratton Lake landing, which you said the county owns. Okay? So I assume that's part of the question for the next meeting, which talks about the town board, the authority to purchase land. I'm just presuming that's why the question's in there. And with the past history of litigation between the town and the county, what kind of probability do you assign to the town and the county coming to a resolution during 2015?
Well.
That goes to her question. Should you put it in? You know, we, the town's been battling in court with the county for a couple of years now. Do you anticipate?
The county has been battling with the town for a couple of years.
No. There's a plaintiff and defendant. The county and the town are in court. Do you anticipate from this that those issues will be resolved during 2015?
Well, I have asked the county park and recs committee to give the town a guidance on whether they will improve that boat landing and make that a county boat landing, county-owned boat landing, or if they want the town to continue to maintain it as they have. The deed that wrote, the deed that gave that property to the county back in the 50s also gave a section of West Stratton Road, which is a Town of Dayton Road, to the county. So there is a ownership there that we have to straighten out. And, you know, I've been trying to get that straightened out with the county. I can't answer why it has taken this long to get it straightened out. I expect that it will be done in 2015. And I asked the park and recs committee to give the Town of Dayton an answer at their December meeting.
Do most townships own boat landings?
Yes.
In the state as opposed to the county or the state?
Yes. Approximately, in 2005, a number of the boat landings around the chain were leased to Wapakia County. And that includes the one at Taylor Lake, the one at Columbia Lake, the one at Dick Lake, and the one at Minor Lake. And since then, the county has made some improvements on those. There is a county-owned one on the Wolf River, but the county operates a number of other boat landings across the Wapaka County that are owned by townships and then leased to Wapaka County for operation.
I guess my question was more inclusive, the state. There are 72 counties, more, you know, 72 counties and towns do the boat landings, or is it a state and a town thing? I guess my question is why do the townships want to be involved in all boat landings?
Well, the statutes and subdivisions for probably almost 100 years required developers when they did subdivision flats around waterways. At one time, it was they must have a public access every thousand feet to the waterway. And those were deeded to the towns because they went to, they were connected to town roads. Subdivision flats are generally always on town roads as opposed to state highways or even county roads. So the access was a town access to the public waterways. Yes, sir.
What's the timing for the application of the grants? Did you do it in 2014 or 15 or what? What's the timing?
For which grants?
Well, the ones you're talking about.
For the boat access improvements?
Well, yeah, there's $180,000 for the highway and then $50,000 for the DNR.
The $180,000 grant was actually written in 2013. It was approved in early 2014. So, you know, that grant has already been approved. The public waterways improvement grants, if they're under, if they're $10,000 or under, typically can be done in 60 to 90 days.
So we did not use the 180 in 2014 and it will move forward into 2015?
Correct.
So that one we're assured of?
Well, that one has been approved by the state.
Are we here to vote on a fixed budget or a variable budget?
We are here to vote on the tax levy. And secondarily, also to vote on the general transportation budgets.
Chris, because of my inability to understand people, you keep telling us we're here to vote on the tax levy.
Yes.
I'm trying to understand. So what you're saying is we can't change any numbers in here. We just vote on the tax levy. So the only way, as this group is the only way that we can prevent spending what we think may be more than we should, vote against the levy? Is that the only way we can do it? So I just want to understand because you keep throwing that tax levy out here and probably this group, more of a lies than me, but I know what you're telling me to vote on, but what does that mean to you? So I want to understand. If we go through this budget and they're uncomfortable with what they're seeing and they don't want to spend that much money, we don't get to change anything, we don't get to do anything. All we get to do is when you say, are you in agreement with the tax levy? We say, yes, we are. And you can spend it this way or we can say, no, we're not. And we want a tax levy that's lower. Do we say we want a lower tax levy?
Yes.
Okay. So if we disagree with the amount of money spent and we come to a point, it's the one, just out of curiosity for my, what is the tax levy with this budget right now? Do you know, is it 1.35?
Well, the, are you?
Just, okay, on the transportation budget.
We're throwing a bunch of words out, but I assume that you're talking about the mill rate?
I don't know. You're saying tax levy, but yeah, is that the mill rate? Is the tax levy the mill rate?
Well, the mill rate is, last year was 162 per thousand. So on a, on a $100,000 home, it was $162.
So the tax levy.
For the town portion of the taxes. The town portion makes up about seven or eight percent of your overall property tax bill. So if you paid $3,000 in property taxes last year, the town portion of that would have roughly been $200.
But the only way to adjust what we're spending is disagree with the tax levy?
Correct.
If you adjust that tax levy and it's not enough to cover everything you have in the budget, you can go to the reserve funds. you can go to the, uh, reserve funds. I mean, I probably know they're not, that's not exactly what they are, but the money you have in CDs.
Yes.
You could spend that money anyway.
Yes.
Even if you lowered the tax up.
Yes.
But the budget already has two hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars coming out of the reserve fund. This is what you're using people's tax, the mill rate lower. And last, and this year you budgeted three hundred and three thousand of the reserves. Correct? So you've taken, in those two years, you've taken five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars out of reserves?
No. No. Last, last year, when we prepared the budget, we were anticipating doing that three bridge project in two thousand fourteen. Because of the number of permits that are required, the engineering work, uh, last year, some of the field engineering could not be done, uh, over the winter because of the amount of snow and, and frost and, and everything else. So the engineers got a late start and the construction window on trout streams is between May fifteenth and September first. So, uh, any project involving or adjacent to a trout stream must be completed in that time period. So those projects were not done in two thousand fourteen. Uh, they're now going out to bid for completion in two thousand fifteen.
So in two thousand fourteen, it was really ninety-nine, eighty-one as opposed to a budget of two? You didn't take as much because you didn't build the bridge?
Correct. And we also didn't get the grants that we were expecting because the grants are, grants, reimbursement for expenses and because the project is not complete, uh, we didn't get any grants money.
If I can try to summarize in my own mind what we've said the last few minutes. It sounds to me like what you're saying is, if we're not happy with the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar overrun in two thousand fifteen, our only recourse tonight is to vote to decrease the transportation budget. Is that correct? That's what I get out of what you said. You said we have two things, we have the mill rate and the transportation budget, that's what we vote on. So if the mill rate doesn't decrease the budget for two thousand fifteen, then the only thing we can do here tonight to get a, to get a balanced budget is to vote to decrease the transportation budget. How am I getting out of all this? Am I correct or not?
I, I, I believe that, that what you're saying is, is accurate. I'm not a hundred percent sure if I'm understanding exactly what you mean.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we're not happy with the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar budget overrun, we want a balanced budget, okay? So we want two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less expenditures from the township in two thousand fifteen. The only way we're gonna get that here tonight is if we vote to decrease the transportation budget by two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The mill rate gains nothing.
Yeah, it, it, you know, you're talking about expenses now. I, I would, I would hope that we could get through the revenues, which, which, you know, the revenues are generally the easier part of it, other than the property taxes. And, and, and when we get into the expenses, then, then perhaps we can get into a little more detail on expenses.
I think you brought up an interesting point though, in fact, that you didn't get the grants that you were looking for last year. And here you're coming on getting them this year. How do you figure that out?
Well, grants are reimbursements for expenses. So the, the town of Dayton is on a cash, uh, accounting system. So we don't, we don't, uh, mark the grant as revenue until it's actually received. We don't record the expenses as expenses until we send out a check. Once we send out the check, then we get the grant back from, uh, whichever agency it is.
So in essence, if you don't get the grants, then you're gonna cut your expenses too?
No, if we don't have the expenses, then we won't get the grants. The expenses come first and then you get the grant. You get the check to reimburse you for the grant.
You spend money before you make it? How many people in this room actually do?
Chris, as I understand it, you apply for the grant. If it's approved, then you do the project.
Yes.
When the project is complete, you pay the money, then you get the, the grant money that was approved.
Okay, so what happened to us here?
We didn't have the expenses. We didn't do the work in two thousand fourteen. The work isn't, uh, gonna be done till two thousand fifteen. So we didn't get the grant money in two thousand fourteen because we didn't send in the expenses in two thousand fourteen.
Okay. You guys all run your house, what's up, Tim Wayne? Town board?
Well, governmental accounting has to follow the formats that the state sets up.
Chris, Mr. Fine, you apply for the grant and then it's approved before you start the work?
Yes.
Okay. I think they're mixing up approval with reimbursement.
Okay. Have we confused that enough? Can we move forward? Uh, the next items, uh, are under license and, and permits?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute here. What's the four-twenty going for?
The four-twenty, that's the county highway and bridge grants. That's line item forty-three, seven, ten.
Does that grant get applied for?
Yes.
Has it been approved?
Yes.
So it covers the cost of the project?
It's fifty percent reimbursement.
Mr. Fine, do you anticipate that levy you spend in twenty fifteen?
Yes. The, the bridges are going out for bid in, uh, in about two weeks. And at that point, we'll have a firmer number. So far, all that we have are estimates that we have from the engineer. Okay. On revenues, uh, cable TV franchise, we get, uh, we get a check from Charter Communications. Um, that has gone up in two thousand fourteen. Uh, we expect it to go up some more in two thousand fifteen because my cable bill keeps going up, so, uh... Uh, business licenses, other, that's, uh, primarily, we've got a couple of beer and liquor licenses in the township. Uh, forty-four twenty dog licenses is a small amount. Forty-four, three hundred, uh, building permits. Building permits is, is primarily a in-and-out, uh, revenue and expense because the, the building permits primarily go to the building assessor for, uh, for his work. We don't have building permits, he doesn't get paid. Um, so that's the, that's the system there. Public, uh, charges for services, we had a couple of cemetery lot sales and burials. Uh, that's for the Harforyville, uh, Harforyville Cemetery. Shelter-
Is there a cemetery spot?
The, um-
For all those people, so you just take the money on the sales and spend it, and he pays the government?
The town of Dayton does. Uh, cemeteries, the, uh, town of, the, the town where a, or I should say, the municipality where the cemetery is located, is the, uh, provider of last resort. So if a cemetery association folds, goes out of business, runs out of people to maintain the cemetery, whatever, the town by state law is obligated to take over the cemetery. So that happened with the Harforyville Cemetery, um, about twenty or twenty-five years ago.
What is the status of the rural cemetery?
Uh, the rural cemetery is, is run and managed by the Rural Cemetery Association. Uh, and, uh, they are responsible then for the maintenance of, of that location. We have two other cemeteries, uh, one on, uh, County Highway K, um, at the Crystal Lake Church and out on Emmons Creek Road, the Pleasant Valley Cemetery. Sorry, I lost my place here. Shelter rentals are, uh, are basically the charges that we have for people renting out the town hall, which is a forty-six, seven, forty-one. Uh, we receive a, uh, small rebate during the summer on the solar panels on the building. Um, uh, during the winter, uh, we have electrical charges as, as there's less solar energy and the, uh, um, you know, we have, we have close to a wash on the electrical charges. Uh, interest income, uh, interest rates are not real good right now. Um, we're gonna be less than what we budgeted for, so we budgeted less in, uh, two thousand fifteen.
Won't I go down more with the taking the two thirty-five thousand of the reserve?
It's, uh, it's just a budget estimate. If you can tell me what the interest rates are gonna be next year, I guess I could probably try and calculate that, uh, a little bit closer. But it's just an estimate. Uh, forty-eight, four hundred, insurance recovery from the landfill. We have the annuity and will receive twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, from the insurance company. Um, that's for, uh, expenses and monitoring at the East Road landfill. Uh, board salaries and expenses, town board. Um, legal expenses.
Can I, can I ask you why the increases in the board expenses have doubled?
Board expenses have doubled?
They went from seventy-five to fourteen-five, the budget is fifteen.
They were budgeted for fifteen last year, we're budgeting for fifteen for, uh, two thousand fifteen.
What type of thing would be in that, that general ledger? Expenses for the board?
Uh, board expenses include, uh, for deans for meetings attended other than the regular town board meeting, uh, mileage, um, and items that the town board members buy for, uh, town purposes.
Chris, can I make a quick statement here? Uh, I went to the Farmington's meeting last night and they gave a ledger of every expense that they paid for the whole month to the group of my four-page documents. And it cleared up any, any misunderstanding or any questions that they might have on what those expenses were for. You might want to take a look at that and, or suggest maybe you implement that here at Dayton.
Have you been to any of our regular town board meetings before it?
No.
Because that is available at the regular town board meeting, the expenses for that month.
So those expenses, those expenses could be in the ledger?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Fine?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, we're discussing the legal expenses, if you know what I mean?
Yes.
Um, that would be one excellent way to save this township part eight of money. Because I'm not sure all the people in this room understand fully that that money is being used for Daytona taxpayers to sue fellow Little Hope and Daytona. Is that the righteous use of our tax money? I think not. And I'm done with this, I'm fed up with it, I know a lot of you are, but why are we suing our own fellow Little Hope Daytona citizens? And frankly, that's not a good use of our legal money or taxpayer money. And I would move that all that money stricken when we stop the legal nonsense. You guys can put an end to it here. Sit down. Thank you.
Unfortunately, uh, we have had a number of lawsuits, uh, in the town of Dayton where the town of Dayton has been sued. Um, and the, uh, Wapaka County Board, uh, chose not to talk to the town of Dayton about the Little Hope Dam despite many, many efforts to discuss that with, uh, the Wapaka County Park and Recs Committee. Uh, actually, there was a gag order put on the county board where they were ordered not to talk to the town of Dayton, uh, board in an effort to try and resolve, uh, that. Um, the Wapaka County Park and Recs Committee was told, before they made their decision, that dropping the water table at the, at the area of Little Hope would lower the water table around the, um, East Road landfill. And the town of Dayton, the town of Farmington, and the town of Lynn have about a million dollars invested in the monitoring well system and the investigations around the landfill. Uh, we talked about revenues and we talked about a annuity that the town is receiving for twenty-one thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years. Uh, but that was the buyout from the insurance company to settle their liability in the landfill on East Road that is leaking contamination into the groundwater. Now, um, I know it's easy to say, if you're not drinking the water or if you don't live in that area, that, that shouldn't be your concern. But that is a responsibility of the town of Dayton to the residents that live in that area.
That is a red herring. And you're fear mongering on these people's health-
This is my turn to talk. This is my turn to talk.
I know Robert's rules of order, so I know when it's my turn to talk and so I'll know when to be quiet. That's all I'm-
Okay. Your turn to talk is not when I'm talking.
And I can be, so, oh, I would, but speak facts for these people.
Okay. So, that's, uh, let me finish explaining about that landfill. Okay? So the, the lowering the water table on one side of the landfill will change the, uh, water table, um, levels around the landfill. At a certain point, if they are lowered below the monitoring wells, which only have a screen, some of them that are five feet in length, if those are no longer monitoring what the DNR requires us to monitor, we're gonna have to reopen the investigation of the landfill and drill new wells. That is something that, uh, our insurance will not cover and Wapaka County has not accepted responsibility for. They are the ones that are making the change in the groundwater. So if you all would be comfortable with writing out a check for a million dollars five years from now, when the groundwater changes, you know, I, I don't think that that's a wise and stupid thing for the town board.
That's long-term budgeting that has no basis in fact. That's long-term budgeting that has no basis in fact.
And we're done.
I've got a question.
Say it.
While we're on the legal, but the five thirteen, I have a question. And it's hearsay that numbers have been thrown out that, and fifty-seven thousand dollars in legal fees. And you have fifty-five year-to-date, eight sixty-five, fifty-four on five thirteen. And you anticipate on top of the fifty-seven thousand dollars in legal fees already, the town is being sued, you anticipate that there's thirty-five thousand dollars in next year's budget. Is that why we lost our insurance and it's more than tripling because of legal fees? You mentioned the insurance.
The, the, the legal fees are going up because there are some of the people in this room that are suing the town of Dayton. And we did have a non-renewal of our insurance because of four lawsuits that had been filed against the town of Dayton. They non-renewed us, we had to go to a high-risk carrier. The town does have insurance, but our insurance costs increased approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, all of you who have kids or have had kids, on your insurance, if you had a minor accident, you didn't turn it into your insurance company, you paid for that yourself because the insurance companies measure your risk when they, when they determine whether or not what your rates are. So all of us that have had teenagers, we've probably paid for a couple of small, minor accidents because we didn't want our insurance to go up. The town of Dayton has been in the situation now that our insurance has gone up. And some of these nuisance lawsuits that the town is receiving, we're gonna have to deal with those directly as a town board and not turn them into our insurance company. So I am expecting that our legal costs will go up on top of our insurance costs.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Has the water gone down in the wells? Has there been a lowering of the well?
Don't know yet. Some of those, some of those won't be measured until the, the June of two thousand fifteen.
Were they down in June of two thousand fourteen?
Some of those went on a reduced monitoring program. One of the reasons why our monitoring costs had been lower over the last number of years.
Were any of them wells measured this last year, this year?
Not the ones in the direction of the lowered water table.
Is there a cost in measuring those wells?
There, there is a cost, but the town of Dayton is only a twenty-eight percent owner in the landfill. And we don't, we don't have the authority to unilaterally change that program. That, that monitoring program is set by the DNR based on the information that they had when they approved the closure of the investigation five years ago. So if the, if the water level changes and they reopen the investigation, we could be back in for hundreds of thousands of dollars in costs.
You would have to drill deeper wells, but you wouldn't have to fill a new well. Wouldn't that be more accurate?
No, no, we, we would have to drill a new monitoring well. And monitoring wells, because of the construction and the engineering that goes into them, we paid anywhere from about twenty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars for monitoring wells around that landfill.
If those wells would have to re-drill, that would be something that would be shared between the three townships.
That's correct.
Chris, isn't it true that that mill pond only was watered down nine to twelve inches? And if you have a five-foot stream, you would think that that stream would, would have caught that or.
Well, I, I can, I can say for the fact, I live about halfway up the mill pond. The, the water in front of my place dropped by over four feet. And, and my water table is influenced by the East Road landfill because there has been measurable contamination, a free-on compound that is traced back to the landfill every time they have tested my well for the last fifteen years.
Chris, I just wanna make sure I understand you're talking about these wells in the five-foot point. And when you say that, it sounds like if it goes down more than five feet, we're not gonna have water. Those pipes are set down in probably what?
That's not what he said.
Well, but I, I know, but when I hear it, it sounds like if it drops more than five feet. When he speaks, when I hear it, it says if it goes, I understood, and I'm not saying he said it, but my perception is, okay, those points are only five feet. So when you said that, I think it only, if the water goes down five feet, it's below the point. That's not true, is it? If the water level by your house goes down five feet, it doesn't go below the point?
You're looking, you're talking about a drinking well, okay? A drinking well is something like forty to a hundred feet into the water table. A monitoring well is nested at certain specific heights, but one of the goals is to measure where the very top of the water table is. The surface of the water table. That's the only thing that they wanna measure, is where that surface is. Because that is a indicator of groundwater direction and groundwater flow. Okay, so that's what they're measuring and they only allow a certain number of feet in that screened monitoring well.
So you're telling me that all the water levels are within them five-foot streams? None of them are above those streams? They don't, they don't drop lines down to check the depth? It's all within that five, because the fear factor here.
Depending on, depending on what kind of monitoring well it is, they also have deep monitoring wells. And, and those are below the level of the groundwater top. Yes, sir.
The county owns the dam when they lower the, the water.
Yes.
So that if the county was the cause of action, create a problem with the groundwater, would not the county be liable for their action? And why then would we as a township wanna get in the middle of that fight if we didn't do it?
Well, but, and, and that's why the attorney that has been involved with the landfill for the last fifteen years advised that we proceed with the, with the action to ask the DNR not to remove the removal of that dam.
Okay, but the other two townships don't seem to, I don't know, are they spending as much money on the trees as we are?
No.
Okay, so you, the town board decided to take a preemptive action rather than wait to see if there's a following of the rule. That's true in your mind? Or it just seems to me that's what you did. There hasn't been a problem yet. The county would have been the cause of action. They owned it, they did it. The township, other than the property owners, why the township?
Do we have any attorneys in the room at all? Don't we generally have to give people notice if there's a issue?
My best answer is it depends.
Thank you, sir.
The science is supporting me.
Thank you, sir.
The best would be the science is supporting me.
Yes, sir.
Was not the county told by the Department of Natural Resources State Wisconsin to lower the water?
The, the county was told to repair, replace, remove, or transfer the dam to another municipal entity. They were given those, they were, they were given those four choices.
Oh, oh, on, on the legal line there, fifty-one, three hundred, you're anticipating spending sixty-five thousand, eight sixty-six dollars.
My computer went out here. Okay, we're back.
Okay, line fifty-one, three hundred, legal, sixty-five thousand, eight sixty-six to be paid out in fourteen, unlegal. And you are projecting thirty-five thousand dollars in legal for fifteen. You must anticipate legal affairs dropping off significantly.
I would hope so, but some of the people in this room are the ones that are gonna have the effect of the town's legal costs. Some of the people in this room are the ones that are participating in suing the town or actively suing the town. So, you know, talk to your fellow town members and please realize that if you sue the town of Dayton, there is a cost that is gonna be passed on to the taxpayers one way or the other.
How much of that sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars was caused by people suing the town?
None. However, we're not gonna have the same insurance next year that we had last year. And the town will have to defend themselves if we keep having frivolous lawsuits.
We're not frivolous. And you contested the dam, Chris, let's be honest. You guys started the legal fight, not the good people in this hall. Thank you.
By observation, we're not disputing the law, an awful lot of misunderstanding. And you're talking about the monetary wealth of the landfill. And that really is a, a very simple, it's all a few steps. If, if water drops on one side, the water and everything is going to report to people. Water's gonna seep to the level. So of course, if the town is down three feet or four feet, we're gonna have to move the, the landfill seepage water. I don't know why that's so hard to believe and so hard to conceive. It's just another, seepage water from the landfill, from the down hill to seep a lower level where the water is, goes on everywhere, all the time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so the legal fees, what portion had to do with the expenses with the Little Hope Dam?
With the, the expenses with the Little Hope Dam, just so we're clear, were involved in the DNR hearing over the permit to, to abandon the license and remove the dam. That's where the majority of that legal fees were, were done. The town does have some other additional legal fees that are included in those amounts. Those amounts are closer to the ten thousand dollar range for our local attorney to handle some matters. And we also chose to publish town ordinances on, on, on the website. And there is a fee for publishing those town ordinances. So those are all under legal fees.
Chris, is it true that the frivolous, the frivolous lawsuits didn't have something to do with the dam? It was regarding tree cutting? Were there any lawsuits that did not obtain the tree cutting? Like the frivolous damage?
The, the town has been served with four lawsuits. Two involved tree cutting. One was, was filed about the election of officers for the Little Hope Lake District. And one was filed by Wapaka County over the formation of the Little Hope Lake District. Okay, so there, there are four active lawsuits or lawsuits that, that have been filed this year. Two of them are involved with the Little Hope Lake District and two of them involve tree cutting.
For the record, Chris, I think you're a little light on your legal expenses there.
Well, you know, again, that's, you know, that's, that's up to the people in this room. You know, if you wanna keep suing the town of Dayton, there are gonna be costs.
A question that has come up, Chris, many times is your situation as being a resident of Little Hope Dam and this whole, you know, it seems like you, you should, as a resident, have a concept of this, in this whole situation.
Well, you know, in addition to the four lawsuits, there have been complaints to the Wapaka District Attorney, to Wapaka, or to state legislatures, to the Governmental Accounting Board, and to the State Attorney General's Office, alleging amongst other things conflicts of interest. My conflict is that I am drinking the water from the Little Hope, or from the East Road landfill. I have for the last fifteen years and I probably know more about it than anyone else in this room. I, I have studied that landfill, I, I have talked to the engineers, I have worked with the engineers, I have worked with the attorneys for, and I've worked with the DNR for over fifteen years. There's very little about that landfill that I can tell you that I know more than anyone in the town of Dayton. That doesn't mean it's a conflict. I'm not the one that shouldn't be drinking the water because I am at the very limits of that landfill. There are people that are closer to the landfill and I talked to one of them just six months ago. And I told him with the amount of chemicals that are in your water, I would advise that you do not drink or use your well unless you have a whole-house reverse osmosis filtering system because they have a number of chemicals. Some of them are cancer-causing chemicals. They're below the action level where the DNR will condemn the well. And the DNR has a very simple threshold. If their threshold is fifty parts per billion, if you're at forty-nine, five, you can bottle your water and sell it at the grocery store. If it's fifty point one, your well is condemned and they come in and they, they red-tag your well and you no longer use that well for, for human consumption. All of the wells are below the action level. Yes, Jim?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. We're on the budget meeting here, not a landfill meeting. Let's continue on to the budget, please.
My well takes. The town work expenses, the biggest variable there is we're expecting less in election expenses next year. We have a, we have a major change in, in the assessor expenses from what is, is awarded. And our two thousand fourteen actual, we went to a contracted assessor as opposed to a salaried assessor. Our contract will save. Our contract will save the town probably in the sixty to seventy thousand dollar area over the next five years. Other town hall expenses are pretty close to what our past ones were. I did include on here an extra twenty-five thousand dollars expected for the insurance costs. We have not received the final estimate from the insurance carrier. We should have that in a couple of weeks. They audit our workman's compensation before they give us our final bill. So, that's still an anticipated expense. We don't have a final program yet. Building inspection, the inspector's salaries again are based on the amount of building permits issued. So, if the building permits go down next year, the inspector's expenses will go down. If building permits go up, that amount will go up. Law enforcement, Water Patrol, then we receive a DNR grant that defrays most of those expenses. Fire protection is the Wapaka Fire District. It includes two items, the town's assessments, and then also that two percent fire dues that I mentioned earlier, we receive from the state, and then we pass on to the fire Ambulance expenses for 2015 are expected to go down a little over a thousand dollars Next item is the road maintenance.
What's on the previous? I was also at the Farmington Town Board meeting last night, and they say that your share of the water control is three thousand, not four thousand, so I was asking you to get a check.
Well, those expenses go to the town of Farmington, the town of Farmington pays all of them, and then they bill the town of Dayton for their share.
They say your share is three thousand.
I have not gotten that from.
That's what they have budgeted, so I just asked you to please double check that.
Also included in that expense for the Water Patrol are the expenses for the cooling, insulation, and replacements around the chain, so we pay sure of that.
Why don't you guess the rate for that?
That's on Stratton.
Last year, we had an exceedingly high bill for winter maintenance. We were over our anticipated budget amount. We've budgeted the same amount for 2015. I do not know what the year old grant is. The items for bridge and road construction.
Before you go there, can you tell me what the roadside ditches encompassing?
Sign and safety includes all of the signs and any safety improvements, basically on the sides of the roads. Roadside and ditches includes mowing expenses and brush removal expenses along the roadside.
Why do we have a twenty thousand dollar budget for signs when we just spent eleven thousand on signs? How many more signs do we put now?
Well, the towns are required to inspect signs annually and include replacement of signs that do not meet standards for reflectivity. The anticipated life sign, the anticipated lifetime of a road sign is about ten years, and we have twelve hundred or so signs in the town of Dayton between warning signs, stop signs, street signs, and no parking signs. So, those are, just to replace those on an annual basis, you'd be talking about a hundred and twenty signs, and signs cost roughly fifty dollars apiece to repair, to replace. Our first evaluation of reflectivity, we showed about three hundred signs that needed to be replaced. We haven't done the reflectivity inspection yet for this year. We tried to replace as many of those as possible last year out of the three hundred, but we did not get all of them. So, we will re-inspect all the signs and.
Does somebody go through, sir, and figure out what signs maybe are not necessary at this point? I mean, it sounds like we reduce the amount of signs. I mean, I don't know about the people in here, but I've seen sign after sign after sign at some points. And it seems like if we're paying this amount of money to maintain the signs, if we reduce the amount of signs we have, costs definitely go down. I mean, wouldn't you agree there's a lot of signs in our.
Well, there are a lot of signs. There are a lot of no parking signs around the chain. Those signs were placed after a joint meeting between the town of Dayton and representatives from the Chainah Lakes District and the Chainah Lake Owners Association, and they made a request for no parking signs on a number of roads.
Of course they did, right? We did not specify how many and where they were placed.
No, but signs are, there's a two thousand page manual put out by the Federal Highway Administration, and the state law says that the town must follow the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So, if we put signs up, we must follow state statutes and the federal manual of uniform traffic control devices.
We're going to boast to be the most compliant and signable. I mean, you're talking about reflect, I'm basing my argument, nobody said a tree since you put the three or four in my argument. You know, it just seems like you overkill everything that you do. You know, if there's some signs that need to be replaced, but on the other hand, you can go zero or a hundred. Someplace in between would be a much more optimal.
Live on the road I live on, and you need time to.
Finally comes the time.
Okay, let's.
Can I finish what I was saying?
Let's keep it to one person talking at a time, please.
Well, I might draw the new order, because I'm grateful for it, because we have camp entrances, it's confusing this summer, and there's children from Chicago, Milwaukee, whatever, they're not used to running around the woods, and they're flying out of that entrance way onto Strant Lake Road, and you lowered that speed limit in that area of thirty-five. I'm grateful for it, because you don't want, you don't want a road with no signs when you've got children that don't realize that they shouldn't run out, out with their bicycles and running out.
Take care of them.
I don't think he's outlawing all signs, I just think he's making no sense at all.
Okay, one person at a time. Okay. Yes, sir.
How come Dayton has to have all them, if Farmington doesn't have to have them on the chain, all them signs?
That's really up to the town of Farmington.
Huh?
That's really up to the town of Farmington. Again, we were requested to post no parking signs on certain roads.
That's just because of you.
Well, it's because of me trying to follow state statutes. So, the big items. Color construction, the final estimate that I got for the Dayton Road Bridge over Emmons Creek was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. The final estimate for the Emmons Creek, West Road over Emmons Creek Bridge was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, two hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, almost an identical amount. I do not have the final estimate for the West Road over Radley Creek. That estimate was a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, and the reconstruction of West Road to bring it up to state standards, that estimate, the last estimate I have, is a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Those, we still have a contingency in addition to that, because we have not bid those projects yet, so we don't know what the final costs are going to be. The town has spent roughly ninety-five thousand dollars in engineering costs in 2014. The town will recoup those engineering costs in the grant when the road is, when the projects are completed. So, the total construction estimate is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
What line in that business is that?
That would be right above fifty-three four twenty, which is the street amount, which is, which is highlighted there.
So, the ninety whatever thousand, is that a hundred percent conversion, or fifty, what you're talking about?
Fifty.
Okay, so we get quartered by forty-six.
Right.
Everything's at fifty percent.
Yes.
And what's the priority of these four projects? I mean, is there one bridge that is in dire condition, and needs to be done first? Are they all immediate, I mean, do they all need immediate attention, or can some people not?
They need work. Replacing a bridge is about a three-year project, and the town cannot wait until a school bus falls into the creek before we do something. The State of Wisconsin had a big project by Green Bay a few years ago, and even with all the resources of the State of Wisconsin, and basically on limited amounts of money, that bridge was closed for about three months when the piers shifted on the interstate bridge going over the Fox River. We have about fifteen small bridges in the town of Dayton. All of them are a hundred years old. They all will have to be replaced probably within the next fifty years.
Excuse me, let me rephrase my question. Do you have an engineering report that says which bridge needs immediate attention?
I'm not sure if I have what you're looking for. All of the bridges are still open to travel right now. None of them have been condemned. No school buses or gravel trucks have driven off of the bridge into the creek, so they are all passable today.
Do you have an engineering report that states that there is one or more of these bridges that absolutely, positively must be done? Yes or no?
Yes. We have engineering reports that say all three of these bridges should be replaced.
Immediately, huh?
This has, this report has started three years ago. When you say immediately, they are not going to be replaced today or tomorrow, and people are still driving over them. So, you know, I don't know if I can satisfy your answer.
Can you produce the reports?
Yes.
Let's see them.
This is a budget meeting. The reports have been in the town office, we've had public hearings. You know, anybody that wants to look at the engineering reports, they are available.
The state inspects all of the bridges in the State of Wisconsin, correct?
The state inspects bridges.
All bridges?
All bridges. Over, and bridges are defined as being over twenty feet. On Parfiville Road, we have two steel culverts that are fifteen feet apiece adjacent to each other. That makes it by state definitions a bridge.
Where are we doing culvert?
On Rural Road, by Ashman Road, we had a culvert that was remeasured and found to be two inches over twenty feet in width. That became a bridge. Up until the state approved it as being greater than twenty feet, it was a culvert. The structure didn't change, but the definition by state statutes and how they can be reimbursed by the federal government changes once that's defined as a twenty-foot bridge as opposed to a nineteen-foot, nine-inch culvert.
So, do you get a copy of all the bridges in this township that are inspected by the state as to their condition, good, fair, bad, whatever their classification is?
The town has six bridges in the township. Five of them have been replaced in the last twenty years. The one that has not been replaced is the one on Rural Road next to Ashman Road, the easternmost of the three bridges in a row. But I do have stated, state mandated inspections on all of those. Those inspections are done by Wapaka County Highway Department. The town of Dayton is responsible to pay for them, and those are done every two years.
Okay, so I guess to your question, none of those bridges came back where immediate replacement was required by the inspection? It's just that each of the town boards chose, the town chose at this point to spend the money today rather than put it off down the road.
No. No. The three bridges that we're talking about were all under twenty feet before, so they were not inspected by the state mandated bridge inspections because they were under twenty feet.
Culverts are not inspected by the state, right?
Correct.
So, the county does that?
No. The town does that.
Where are the salaries listed for the road maintenance crew, the ones who cut the trees and put up the signs and?
Most of those expenses all go under the category, uh, road maintenance, other maintenance. So, that's, uh, five thirty-three, one-one-six. Okay. Moving on. The next item is, uh, is sanitation. The sixteen thousand dollars is our share of the current monitoring costs. Wapakia Area Recycling is, is our share of the, uh, recycling center, um, on Shadow Road. Sorry, yes, Bob?
Our share last year was eleven thousand. This year rebounded eight thousand. I'm curious why that's gone down.
Uh, our bill, which we've already paid, was, uh, eight thousand and forty-five dollars. And so, we're expecting that.
The Wapakia Area Recycling is charging all the municipalities no money at all. It's all being taken here above the reserves. Farmington has a zero in that slot.
And I have the wording from Farmington which says, "The town of Farmington is a party of five municipalities, which also includes Dayton, that support the recycling center in Wapakia. It was voted at the Recycling Compost Commission to use reserves to cover expenses for next year." So, that eight thousand should be a zero, just like Farmington.
That's, that's, uh, wonderful to hear, and I'll be happy to make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the county assessment is for the Wapakia County, uh, operation, uh, outside of Manoa. They are assessing the town of Dayton for sixty-six hundred dollars. Sanitation, other is primarily our, uh, local garbage pickups, including the ones that we do at the, uh, boat landing and the town park. In other areas, uh, animal control costs, um, cemetery e- expense, uh, we propose to, to put up a fence on the, uh, east side of the cemetery in Parkerville. That area is now open, and Wapakia County hopes to, uh, develop that, uh, next year.
You won't do that until they develop it?
Until we find out they're going to develop it.
Or until they develop, they might not develop it until we do.
They... You know, I guess, uh, I, I, I'm sorry that I'm not, uh, giving those communications from, uh, from Roger Holman. I've been, I've been, uh, I've been working on it and trying to find out what their plans are. I, uh, I proposed to him that the cemetery, um, should be expanded in, uh, in Parkerville. He has not told me what his plans are. And if, uh, if the cemetery were to be expanded, then, um, you know, we would have to move the fence per se.
That's not expensive.
Well, we're not going to fence anything unless it's town property. Okay. I'll lay for dam removal, but there's a fifty thousand dollar expense. We were requested to remove that, um, in conjunction with removing the fifty thousand dollar grant. That would, in, in any sense, that would be a wash, uh, for the town, so it does not affect the bottom line of, uh, of the budget. If the grant, if the expense is gone, the grant is gone also.
What's the access? Fifty-five, two oh one.
Uh, fifty-five, two oh one. That's, uh, that's what I talked about earlier. The Stratton Lake Boat Landing and the Spencer Lake, uh, Boat Landing. Those are budgeted for twenty thousand dollars in expenses, ten thousand dollars apiece. And the, uh, DNR grant would be fifty percent of that, so that's why the DNR grant that I mentioned for that item was ten thousand dollars.
But you'd only do the Stratton Lake one if the town would acquire that project?
Well, the...
Because it's a county boat landing, right?
No, it's a town boat landing. The town has operated it for the last sixty years, and the, uh, Roger Holman has indicated that the town should expect to still continue to operate it. But until the ownership is straightened out, I can't get a grant from the DNR, and so that project has been hold, on hold for two years.
Five fifty-three hundred recreational program. If this year for nine months it was twenty thousand, six forty-three, how do we have not much less than that for three months to the end of the year as expected, putting our total at over forty thousand dollars?
That's a, that's a timing issue of when invoices are received and paid for. The amounts in the year-to-date expenses, the left-hand column, are only the checks that were actually written at the time that the budget was prepared. But, uh, we have a contract with the city, uh, for roughly, uh, thirty-eight thousand, uh, dollars to support the recreation, uh, the city recreation program. Also included in there is, uh, is the contribution to, uh, the City of Wapakia fireworks display, which, uh, the town has done for the last ten years or so, um, for fifteen hundred dollars. Yes, sir?
That, that amount that you contract with the city of Wapakia, is that based on the town population or the actual number of youth that participate in the program?
Based on the population.
Yeah, that, that's based on the population.
Do we know how many of the youth in the town may participate in those programs so we can figure out what it costs the taxpayers for the youth to participate in this program?
The...
Because obviously I don't believe a large percentage of us sitting here participate, I'm just curious.
Well, you know, most of us are out of the, uh, the soccer and softball ages right now, so, yes, you're right. But we, we also have included, uh, uh, some money to support the senior center at, uh, as part of the city rec program.
And they do show up, the parks department does show up to the board meetings. Uh, now, they've shown up once, and Aaron...
Aaron Jensen, uh, said that he'll give us an annual report. Uh, he gave us a report in maybe September.
Yeah.
Uh, that broke down all of the, uh, participants from the town of Dayton and, uh, the other, the other townships that participated in the, in the city program.
So, so that number and that, that dollar amount could be calculated, if it is available, if you would publish it on the town's site.
Well, that, that was, uh, that was about a forty-page document that, that he gave us with, uh, all the data of all of the different, uh, programs that the city recreation department has.
What do we get for forty, thirty, forty thousand dollars?
You know, if you, if you stop in during, uh, you've had that report, don't you, from Aaron Jensen?
I can get one.
Yeah.
I can get a current one.
If, if you want one, you know, Judy will have one, and she'll have it at the town hall, and, and feel free to, to come in and, and take a look at it. Yes, sir?
Obviously, I don't have the kids in the, in the park program, but we get for money in the park program. There's a lot of young people learning a lot of useful life skills. One of them did leadership, team building, cooperation, say nothing about physical, physical health. Every day we visit, pick up a paper and read about juvenile diabetes, increase the immune card, it used to be about kids. I'm very happy to help with programs that are going to get our kids, uh, really, because they won't have grandchildren, they won't have a family either. But I golly, let's support our youth and give it every opportunity to be healthy and pretty good with skills.
I'd just like to second what she said.
Yep.
As somebody who's raised three children in, in town, just because my kids are getting further along doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to support the youth in our area. Our park and rec department and the things we have in Wapakia are second to none. You go around to any of the other areas, much larger areas than ours, and, and they don't have half the stuff we have, and it's just fantastic for the youth and for the kids to stay active, and so, I, I support that.
Well, the town of Dayton has supported that for almost twenty years now, and, uh, it, it is a significant amount, but, uh, the town boards have consistently supported that over the years. And the residents at our annual budget meetings have supported that. Are there any other questions on the budgets before we close the budget hearing?
You know, if you guys have issues with any one of us up here, I guess I ask that you not take it out on the mill rate. That sounds like the quick and easy fix of it. Honestly, the easiest fix is in April, if you don't want me, vote me out of here. If you don't want any of us, vote us out of here. That's the easiest fix. By reducing the mill rate, you're going to stunt the town for years to come. Just please think about that. Because the way the state has it set up, correct me if I'm wrong, um, we can't exceed last year. So, if we reduce this year, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we will not be able to exceed that, exceed what you guys would reduce it to without going to a referendum.
How come we spent more than the budget? I don't understand that.
I'm sorry, what, what was that?
Didn't we spend more this year than the budget?
No, we are...
Did we spend more last year than the budget?
No. No. We, we spent less than the budget amount, uh, for a number of years, probably going back ten years.
And the reason the reserves have gone down is because the...
That was in the budget?
That was in the budget. Yes. No, the reserves have not gone down. You know, you're looking at the budget number.
Look at what they say about the reserves here in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen.
In, in two thousand ten, a notable year because that was the last year that Jim Pedlow was the chairman, and, uh, I was elected as the chairman. Ship, the fund balance at the end of two thousand ten was five hundred and thirty, uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Our two thousand fourteen anticipated fund balance is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, so that's an increase of roughly three hundred thousand dollars over the last four years. So, we have not been spending more than we could pay in regardless of what someone may have tried to tell you.
But your fund balance for twenty fifteen says almost six hundred thousand now.
Yes, which will still be an increase over what it was four years ago, but we have, we will have made structural improvements to the town that have to be made. Yes. And, you know, we can, we can, we can talk about not doing the bridges, and, you know, I, I hear that in some of the comments that were made, but we can't avoid the responsibility of replacing those bridges. We can, we can delay some of them, but that's only going to increase the cost. The grant that we have for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for West Road, that work must be completed in two thousand fifteen. That was a biannual budget, um, grant from the state, and that money has to be, um, used in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, or the town of Dayton loses it. If we don't do bridges next year, the money that we have spent almost a hundred thousand dollars on engineering costs is not reimbursable. We don't get reimbursed if we don't do the projects. So, that money would also be lost, and the cost of replacing those bridges could only go up over time. It's not going to get cheaper if it's put off in five years. The town has the money right now to do those bridges and get them taken care of. What the town does when we put up signs or, um, brush back roads or pave roads or replace bridges or culverts or, uh, put shoulders on roads that right now just have drop-offs into the side of the road and, and people flip their cars when they hit them. Those are all safety improvements. When we do a safety improvement, it's the people in this room that benefit from that. It's, it's, it's residents of the town of Dayton that are flipping their cars or hitting deer or, or, uh, or having accidents. The town of Dayton probably spends more than any other town in Wapakia County on winter maintenance, but the town of Farmington and the town of Lynn, they don't plow roads when there's only a couple inches of, of snow out. They don't sand roads when they get slippery. We have in the town of Dayton, and as long as I'm chairman, we're going to continue to do that, but that's for road safety. Yes, we could avoid sanding roads, we could avoid plowing roads, we can disconnect the streetlights. It saved ten thousand dollars.
No, I tried that once. You think this is a full house? I had a bigger full house.
You know, uh, a, a few years ago, I, I tried, uh, one winter, we didn't plow out the turnarounds completely during the winter. That probably saved the town almost a thousand dollars per snowfall. Because the time it takes to clear out a, a turnaround at a hundred dollars an hour for the operator in the truck, if you spend ten minutes clearing out a turnaround, you're spending, uh, you know, money every single fifteen, fifteen dollars per turnaround, and we have seventy-five turnarounds. We have seventy-five get-ins in the town of Dayton. So, seventy-five times fifteen, you're talking a thousand dollars in expenses just... So seventy-five times fifteen, you're talking a thousand dollars in expenses just by doing that. The feedback that the town got is the people wanted those turnarounds cleared out. So we've done that. Yes, sir.
If we do the culverts, two in two thousand fifteen and two in two thousand sixteen, will we lose the benefit of the grants on the, uh, engineering?
If, if, if we do not do the West Road project, that, that is a grant for two thousand fifteen. That project has to be completed in two thousand fifteen. That cost is going to be a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the road construction portion and a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for the bridge construction portion.
Okay, so the other two, could they be done in two thousand sixteen?
The other two are going out for bid in, in two weeks. The bid documents have already been prepared. There is penalties to the town. If we cancel the project or delay the project, we are liable for all cost increases and, uh, engineering costs to date. So, so yes, to answer your question is, yes, we could delay that two-bridge project for Dayton Road and, and West Road, but that would only increase cost to the town of Dayton.
What was the penalty this year? What was the penalty this year? Cause they were supposed to be done this year, weren't they? They were in the budget.
They were, they were in the budget, but the engineering continued and we kept paying those engineering bills through two thousand fourteen. We had to get permits from the DNR, we had to get, uh, I mean, everybody was involved. FEMA is, FEMA gets involved because of floodplains, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, several departments in the, uh, in the DNR. So, so yes, we can talk about delaying things, but it's only gonna cost all of these people in this room more money.
Chris, these are penalties to who? You said penalties, what penalties to who?
Our, our contract.
You haven't signed the contract yet. So you could.
We signed, we signed an engineering contract. We, we signed an engineering contract.
That engineering is still good, even if we waited a year before it is, so that's really not penalty.
They have the right to, if there is a delay caused on our part, they have the right to assess us additional costs.
Engineering?
Engineering, yes. I, I'm, I'm telling you, that's, that, that is what the contract, I, I don't know if it's a small additional cost or a large additional cost, but there will be an additional cost.
The, I think I can answer, answer your question. The engineering firm, they do all of our bidding, that's part of the whole process. And we told them, we want these projects bid it out. So it's gonna be bid as one project. Now, if we delay that, split that, change that, just like when you build a house, if you have a change order, it's gonna cost you more money. Right?
But we don't know how much.
I, we don't know, I, I don't remember.
It, it, it may be a minimal amount, but what is the gain? What is the gain in delaying that project?
Based on some inflation rate that you adjust, so there's ways around that as well. I, I think our point is, a lot of us just don't like letting deficits go years in a row. And we're trying to work with you to find a way that we don't have to run a deficit this time.
Sir, if I'm understanding right, these things are on a timely issue. The state says, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna award this grant, but we want it done in a certain amount of time. If you don't do it in that amount of time, are you saying then, then we'll lose what we've put into it? Because what we're gonna do is we're gonna give the state or whoever's applying the grant the money at the end and we're gonna reimburse it. If everything's done, everything, our checks and balances all hit and it's done in a timely manner, right? So what you're saying is we've already progressed so far that if we stall this, the time's gonna run out and we're not gonna get reimbursed for that money, correct?
Well, there's, there's basically two different grants. One is a reimbursement for the culverts. The other grant is for bringing West Road up to current state standards. The, the West Road grant is for expenditures during the current state biennial.
That ends June thirtieth, right?
That, that ends June thirtieth, but, um, the, the grant is written so it's a, it has to be done in the calendar year.
So you're telling me that it's not a problem if we go into July on either one of these on a reimbursement because we'll be in the new biennial budget?
No, those, those, the grant has been approved as long as we, we turn in the receipts in two thousand fifteen.
No matter that it's in to the two thousand, whatever, the next budget? They'll hold that money for this budget?
Right, the, the state will hold that money as long as we complete the project in the calendar year two thousand fifteen.
And that's for a culvert or a bridge and a road, is that correct?
That's for the West Road DOT grant. Only.
That fifty percent?
Yes.
Chris, if you've bid a job this year and you let the contract or you don't let the contract and you delay the job come next year, you're gonna have to bid it again. If you think the price is gonna go down, you've never bid a job before.
Well, you know, the, the engineers recommended that we bid those two-bridge, bid project in December to get the best prices that the town would get for the next construction season. They're in that business. I hope that this is the last bridge project that I'm involved in for the town of Dayton. And, uh, you know, I have to trust the professional engineers that we hired to, to design that and to bid it. I am not gonna sit there and decide if they have forty weight steel or sixty weight steel in the rebar that they put in the bridge abutments. That's gonna be a professional engineer that supervises that project.
Got a question for your time?
Uh, not so much a question, but a statement. The, the state transportation fund is becoming a hot topic in the state of Wisconsin. And the one thing, I, I used to sell municipal equipment, so I gave a ton of it. One thing that does happen with these grants is they do dry up. When budgets get tight, that's the state level, that's our transportation fund. These grants will be the first thing that they'll start wheeling away at. Not something that's approved. An approved grant is like really money waiting in the bank where you complete the project, you get the grant, it's approved. If you delay this for a year or two, that money would have to be reapplied by the state because it, it, it kind of sets that. And, uh, at, at this current juncture in time, I would suspect that certain grants are gonna slowly evaporate and then they're gonna find ways to refill those, those areas over time. How much time that is, who knows?
Well, the, the grant that we got for the hundred and eighty thousand dollars was a competitive grant. So our project was placed against, uh, all the other projects that were submitted in the state of Wisconsin. And, uh, we received the grant. It's not a automatic grant and each county is allowed to, uh, submit up to three grants. Now, if, if we have the math, they could have two hundred applications. They didn't have that many because, uh, many counties, including Wapaka County, only, only supplied one grant request. So ours was the only, uh, grant request that was, uh, supplied Wapaka County and we were one of the twenty-five that, that received the grant. Two years from now, we could reapply again, but, uh, another township in Wapaka County could be scored higher than, uh, the town of Dayton's request and ours might not even go to the state the next time around, even if we applied again.
So we could still split them between the two years and the only change would be the cost of possibly the construction. Because the grant is written so that we could actually do them in two years.
The, the, the grant that was received required construction in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen. We're now talking about two thousand fifteen, the last eligible year for that grant.
And that's for all three? For all, all four, the Gulfmore front?
That's for the West Road.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. The West Road and one bridge has to be done in two thousand fifteen. The other two bridges, culverts, whatever you wanna call them, can be done in two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
Yes.
If you haven't applied a grant for those, right?
Yes, I have. That's a different grant program. That's administered by Wapaka County. And, and we applied for, uh, the grant on those last June when we received the, the preliminary engineering costs.
Was it granted, is it accepted?
That, that's one of those that is actually no option. The county must fund those at fifty percent, uh, providing we meet their deadlines. And we met their deadline by submitting the application in June.
So all four of these projects are covered by grants?
Fifty percent covered.
Partially, partially covered.
Yeah, partially.
But they can be split into two years?
Yes, ma'am.
I recall from earlier discussion about the bridges, um, something you said about how many, I guess, culverts there are in the town of Dayton. I'm not wild about replacing a bridge or a culvert if that's needed, but even if those numbers you quoted, I don't remember what they were, I'm precise, we have a lot of culverts that are very, very old.
Yes, that's correct.
And at some point, because of the way they were built, they will be failing over the next.
Fifty years?
But, but failing and there's a lot of them. So even if we replace one culvert a year, we may or may not beat the ones that are gonna collapse. If we've got grants to do these culverts and engineering work done, um, it appears to be reasonable to proceed with those and address the others in some sort of measured fashion.
And then again, uh, just for earnings, from the sales side, I'd much rather bid four than I'd bid two this year and then two the next year. You've got logistics, moving equipment, you've got big components that gotta be moved. It's just gonna add costs.
Well, and, and, you know, all four projects together is, is a million-dollar bid pattern. And, you know, the advice that the town board got from Wapaka County Highway Department, the advice from the engineers, is that by bidding those together, we'll have a cost savings. And yes, we could split them up, we could do one a year for the next four years or something like that, but that would increase the cost to the taxpayers here in this room. So, you know, really, why are we arguing about this?
Question. Wasn't it determined earlier that there was only one bridge that was critical to be replaced? Or did I misunderstand something?
I guess, I don't know that I addressed what you're talking about. I don't know what, uh, what you're referring to.
And somebody would have to have, have had some studies done to determine which bridges were going to be done. We know initially there were three bridges and suddenly they switched to some different bridges. I know that there are reports that say which is the most critical. We must have them. And if one is critical, then do it.
The most, the most critical structural, uh, bridge was the one on Dayton Road over Emmens Creek Road. Of, of the bridges in the town of Dayton, that was the only one that was a steel girder construction and there was considerable rust on, uh, on those girders underneath the bridges. There, there is also, uh, erosion underneath the abutments of, uh, of that bridge as well as, uh, a number of other bridges. And if the abutment, um, erodes underneath, eventually the bridge will collapse. But the most critical one, I guess, to answer your question, was the one on Dayton Road at, at West, Dayton Road over Evans Creek.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dayton Road over Radley Creek. The, um, West Road over Radley Creek down by State Highway twenty-two is the smallest or the narrowest bridge in the town of Dayton. The state standards are the bridges should be twenty-four feet from abutment or guardrail to guardrail. That bridge was only fourteen feet, six inches. And, uh, a lot of our farm equipment, uh, is wider than that. And that bridge is in an area that has a lot of agricultural activity. So this whole thing started about three years ago when the town board received a petition from a number of, uh, people down in that area because their equipment was being damaged by that bridge when they were trying to cross it, uh, with some of their agricultural equipment. Fourteen feet, six inches is, is a significantly narrow bridge and is less than the state minimum standards for, uh, a road with two-way traffic.
I just have one question. If you do all four projects, let's say it's a million dollars, and you're, the grants will cover fifty percent, is that correct? So that's five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, slightly more than fifty percent because, uh, because of how the grants are constructed and almost a hundred thousand dollars is already spent in two thousand fourteen. So, uh, we will not spend that money again, but we will get reimbursed for it once the projects are completed.
Whatever the difference is, if it's, I guess you're an example, five hundred thousand dollars, where did the other five hundred thousand dollars, did that come out of the reserve?
Well, I, I actually have a breakdown here. The expected local grant, the one that's administered by Wapaka County, uh, would be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Their approval amount was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because we allowed for contingencies when we, uh, we did the request. The two thousand fifteen DOT grant is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The anticipated town share of those expense, of the, uh, completion expenses to, um, remaining is roughly three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Where does that come from?
That comes from the budget.
From the budget or from the reserve?
Well, the, the budget includes the reserve funds. In the back?
I'd like to call for both on the budget or call for another public hearing, move to the next step.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. Town board?
Motion to close the public hearing?
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next item then is to convene a special meeting of the town electors. Everyone that is. Uh, everyone that is, uh, a registered voter in the town of Dayton is, uh, is allowed to vote. Uh, we don't have a poll list. Uh, we didn't check anyone in or ask for ID or anything else. Uh, is there anyone in the room that is not an elector of the town? One, two, three, four, five, I think? Six?
Raise your hands again, please.
Nope, seven. Okay, so we will pass out the, we will pass out some ballots when we take the votes. Uh, please remember and we'll all trust you not to take the ballot if you're not an elector of the town.
Chris, will this be on the amended budget on that eight thousand dollars amount that was mentioned earlier?
It, it'll be the questions that were in the public notice, uh, uh, as the questions that'll be before the electors. And, and I'll read those off. Uh, shall the town of Dayton exceed the expenditure limits for highway and bridge expenditures for the 2015 fiscal year? Shall the electors authorize a continuing grant of authority for the town board to purchase any land within the town for president and anticipated town purposes, reference Wisconsin Stat 60-10 to E. And when we get to that, I will have more information on that. Uh, and then the electors shall approve the, uh, town of Dayton property tax levy for the 2015 fiscal year. So those, those are the three questions that we will vote on.
We need it one at a time or-
Pardon me?
We need it one at a time?
One at a time, yes. And once the, uh, once the, uh, budget is complete on the agenda for tonight's town board meeting, unless we get too late and recess that to a later date, uh, is the approval of the budget for 2015. So the town board approves the budget expenditures, the town residents approve the tax levy.
What's the first one to be?
Now, the first question is, well, before we get into that, before we get into that, I'm going to convene the meeting of the electors of the town of Dayton. This is a, uh, meeting of the electors to consider the three questions put before them. We need motions and seconds, uh, on, uh, on anything done. So if you make a motion, uh, please identify yourself for the clerk so she can record that. If you seconded it, we'll, if we have more than one second, we'll try and recognize one. And when I recognize the second, please state your name so the clerk can record the second.
Mr. Chairman, this is on regard to the levy limit, right?
Uh, the first question is, uh, the expenditure limits for highway and bridge expenditures, uh, which is the transportation budget including streetlights for 2015. The state statute is that expenditures more than five thousand dollars per, per mile have to be approved by the town board annually. Uh, the town of Dayton has spent over five thousand dollars per mile since nineteen ninety-seven. And believe it or not, fuel costs and other costs have gone up since nineteen ninety-seven. The current state expenditure limit without the approval from the voters would be roughly three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So I need a motion to, or I'm asking for a motion to exceed the expenditure limits for highway and bridge expenditures for the 2015 fiscal year. Yes, sir?
Yes, uh, even I'm sorry.
Okay.
I believe that the town of Dayton establishes 2015 transportation budget not to exceed nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. This represents a balance net pound shift budget.
I'll fix it in a second. Nine seconds? Nine forty. Uh, and that is up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Uh, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. An expenditure of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars is less than what was budgeted. That will involve some changes. Uh, it will involve some changes on the maintenance side of the budget. It will involve some changes on the, um, road and culvert, uh, construction side of it. Some of those changes, uh, may cost the residents of the town more in the long run. So, uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, there's more discussion. Uh, you are notorious for stating from Peter to Paul. We have a shout out here-
Mr. Dixon?
We have a-
Mr. Dixon?
This is positive discussion, my friend.
I'm gonna ask you-
Please, Sheriff again? Wonderful. My point is you are spending all kinds of money on extraneous things. Tree cutting, bucket truck, fifty thousand dollar building. Why can't you, you know, give a little, I've heard signs. I've heard so many things in the last year, two years. Uh, you think that this money grows on streets, you know? But I hear a lot of people saying, "I want, man, I want it too," but unfortunately.
Is there any other discussion?
Let me just make an observation. I'm gonna spend a pile of money replacing my roof this year because it's worn out. These bridges, I hold my breath when I drive over the bridges. We've made an investment in the land. So I have a project that, ooh, draw that away. Boy, arbitrarily, so it's not gonna stand a lot. You have another?
Yes, sir.
Well, you have to realize also that this room is filled with primarily retired people. That money that you're talking, being, been batting around or whatnot. There's a lot, a lot of paychecks not coming in and we're living off Uncle Sam and a little bit of retirement we got from our jobs. That hasn't been considered at all. You're talking about, I agree a little bit, not at all, not completely, but children themselves. But when you start talking about money, you talk a lot of money and you don't realize that there's a lot of retirement, retired people sitting in this room. Think about that, 'cause someday you're gonna be sitting in that position. You're not gonna have a cushy job you never-
That's right. Well, Lee, I'd like to make a motion and say I'm ahead of both of us. We, we have a number of people that had their hand up, uh, and I would ask that you allow a few more minutes of discussion? Yes, sir?
I thought when we were gonna vote, we were gonna vote on item number one.
Yes.
And there was no place in there that specified anything other than that item. They didn't specify number, dollar value, just that item. How come all of a sudden you start to make an amendment to what we're supposed to vote on?
Well-
We just went through two hours of budget, so if they don't wanna pay the bid for it, say no. But why should they be able to say, "We wanna only spend nine hundred and forty-five thousand"?
It, it is proper to have a dollar limit, uh, in that-
Why didn't we say?
In that motion?
Why didn't we say, "Save the expenditure" instead of put a dollar value instead of that?
Many people are being objective, okay?
Okay.
Uh, I, I think there's other places you can save them, but, uh, the other maintenance that everyone's been complaining about. Several people have complained about the other maintenance that's been done in the town. There's sixty thousand dollars there that I wager was not there three years ago. Uh, the twenty-five thousand dollars is legal. I think it-
That, that's not part of the transportation budget.
I know, but it's not part of the transportation.
And, you know, anything and everything would have to be considered by the board, uh, to reduce that. We could reduce, uh, snow plowing, we could reduce, uh, sanding, uh, in, uh, in icy situations. We can reduce, uh, uh, mowing the ditches, uh, instead of twice a year, we could do it once a year. We could eliminate, uh, fifty percent of the streetlights, uh, that are, are currently in the town. You know, there's-
I know.
There's, that's a pretty big change in the budget, so, uh, I would doubt that the town board could make that decision tonight. But no, that's, 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 that's called reality.
No, then let them vote.
All right? We, we will, we will vote, so the, the, the vote is either yes, and yes would set the limit of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that right, Mr. Dixon?
It was budgeted for one point two.
And, and no would, uh, would, uh, uh, continue the discussion. We would set a another dollar limit by a motion if the vote is no. Another dollar limit could be higher or lower than the nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yes.
The, the budgeted amount that the town board had was-
You have to vote.
Do you have to vote yes or no?
A no vote means that we'll continue to discuss it. The yes vote means it's set at nine hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And a no vote would allow us to entertain another-
I think Judy will be-
On the amount that we should set the budget.
Wait for the high, how are you?
Taco Bell's one of the-
I know, I wish I missed that job.
Did I miss anybody?
If you have the rest of it, I'll get some more. Oh, here. Thanks, Kate.
Oh, I need one. Thanks.
Does anybody else have a ballot that needs to be turned in before they count? Anybody else have a ballot that needs to be turned in before the count? Going a third time, anybody else have a ballot?
Will the room come to order, please?
What?
Wow, she's got a louder voice than me, thank you.
On that question, the yes votes were sixty-five, the no votes were thirty-two, so the nine hundred and forty thousand dollar expenditure limit is adopted.
Woo-hoo!
Okay, question two. Shall the electors authorize a grant, a continuing grant of authority to the town board to purchase any land within the town for present or anticipated town purposes? Referenced state statutes, uh, sixty dash ten. This is not a question about the Scranton Lake boat landing. Uh, we will not purchase the Scranton Lake boat landing from Wapata County, that will be signed over on a quick claim deed. This is not a question about the Little Hope Dam. The, Wapata County has voted to abandon the Little Hope Dam. When you abandon property, you don't get payment for it. Uh, if the town of Dayton receives the Little Hope Dam, that will also be on a quick claim deed. There will not be a purchase of the Little Hope Dam. The question is brought before you because there are some, um, access improvements. Uh, there's specifically property that is for sale, uh, adjacent to the Partridge Hill Park right now, and the town would like to do something about access on the Upper Crystal River. Uh, uh, even though those properties are expected to be a hundred percent paid for by a DNR grant, there again, that would be a reimbursement, and the town would have to buy the property and then get the grant reimbursement or the donations, uh, to cover that amount. So we can't do that transaction, even if it's not at any cost to the taxpayers unless we see, receive the authorization.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Most of the time, purchasing or receiving property like that wouldn't have to be this week or next week. Wouldn't it be prudent to have, for the purchase of any property, which may not be the one we're talking about, but may be something else, uh, to have a town hearing on it, rather than give you authorization to just spend money? Let's say you wanted to buy the Partridge Hill School, or the old Partridge Hill town home.
The, the old Partridge Hill School?
School, what is it?
Yes. Yes, adjacent to the Partridge Hill Cemetery.
Adjacent to the Partridge Hill Cemetery. What about the property on the Crystal River adjacent to-
You're taking the church hall, the old Partridge-
The old church hall?
Yes.
If you wanted to purchase that?
Yes.
I would think that that would be some expenditure and that the township should have some say, rather than just the three people sitting up there.
Well, um, purchasing property when you're getting a reimbursement from the DNR requires a DNR mandated step.
Is that in this authorization here? Is that the way that's stated?
No.
Uh, it's-
What do you mean? Well, if we give you authorization to purchase property-
Yes.
Without any say from the electorate at time of purchase, it doesn't say anything about grants or DNR.
There, there's no money in the budget for purchasing property.
Then why are we giving you the authorization?
Because the, the property that I have discussed with an owner of the property would be, um, covered by a DNR grant and donations, but the town would have to purchase the property and then get the DNR grant. That, that requires, to get a DNR grant requires a DNR mandated appraisal being done, uh, which is a little bit more elaborate than a, uh, you know, a regular home appraisal, but is, is, uh, required, a required step before getting the DNR grant. As a town chairman, I would like to know what the DNR grant is before I negotiate a final price and try and figure out what kind of donations would have to be thrown into it. You know, let's, let's not make it more complicated than it is.
Uh, but you haven't presented any idea of the cost of that land after the insurance cost, the maintenance cost. Whatever you do with the land, we have no idea what those costs are. So why would we approve something without us knowing the intended use, the budget for maintenance, insurance, whatever else is included?
Well, it, you, you know, I, you're absolutely right, I don't know what costs are gonna be five years, or ten years, or twenty years, or a hundred years from now, but, but what we're talking about is some public improvements, and, um, lost my train of thought. Um, you know, before the, the, before the DNR will, I can't go to a property owner and say, "We are interested in buying this, but we have to have forty-two public hearings and, uh, you know, discussions before we can even make an offer on your property." Any offers would be conditioned- There, there are no taxes, there would be no difference in insurance.
I'm talking about what I want. I mean, that's a part of your thought, Harvey.
Yes, ma'am.
Your, your motion is not specific to what you've just been talking about. Your motion is for a cart lunch approval, of permission to buy any old thing that none of us know anything about ahead of time. I think John's suggestion of leaving it to a referendum or a public hearing at, at the appropriate time, rather than a general approval to do whatever you want in terms of buying property.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't go to a property owner and say, "I might buy your property for some, uh, amount at some time in the future, please hold it, but we have to have a referendum first." Uh, uh, you know, the, the- You can't have a referendum to buy property. It must not go forward. No one has referendums to buy property, ever that I have ever heard of. And you wanna know what? The town chairman and the town board have to run for office every two years. If you don't like the property that we buy, or, or the town's evaluation of it, you can find someone else, or you can run.
I make a motion, we vote no.
I second it!
Okay. We've, we've had a motion from John, and we had a second from-
Ann Linden?
Ann Linden. Okay, uh, discussion.
Can you-
Now, what was the, you said public improvements, were you talking about access, or a particular type of parcel? What did you mean by public improvement, when you said you wanted to purchase it?
Public access, yes.
Access.
Yes. And, uh, public access to the waterways requires some improvements. Yes.
Can I get some clarification on the motion? Uh, the motion that I heard-
With no.
Doesn't make any sense-
Okay, can I do that second?
For a vote.
What is the motion?
That's what I'd like clarification of.
That the electors not be authorized, continuing grant of authority for the town board to purchase. Said the town board not be authorized to purchase any land within the town for present or anticipated town purposes, referencing Wisconsin Stat sixty dash point ten, parentheses two, parentheses E. Okay. And now, and you had a second?
As I understand, this particular piece of property is near the cemetery off the Partridge Hill Road, is that not correct?
No, that's not correct.
That's not where you're talking about?
No. It's another owner, and another, uh, piece of property with access to the river.
May I, may I, excuse me, I would like to amend that without a binding hearing.
That, that's not a proper question.
Oh, you mean, it could come back to the electors at a later date.
Ann, you had a question?
Yes. Is, does this, um, idea have any basis in a capital improvement plan, a long-term strategic plan, a mission, a goal, anything that's previously been conceived, or is it something that just came up in the last X number of months?
Uh, this particular property, uh, became available in the last couple of months, and, uh, I talked to the property owner about it, he doesn't wish to be, uh, he doesn't wanna go through a referendum and a public hearing. He wants to, he wants to help the town, and-
But, but you're not answering my question about what is the big picture, is this something that's been on our radar, maybe not the specific property, but in concept?
Yes.
Why do we want it?
Yes, public access to, to the Crystal River has been a issue in the town, and, uh, has been on our radar. Yes, please.
Chris, since you don't wanna give the name, and I understand that, could we just make a motion just on that one piece of property?
No.
And not everything else?
No.
Well, we've got a, we've got a motion on the floor.
I understand it, but I'm just saying, if he changes his motion, can we make a motion or just on that one piece of property?
We can amend the motion, um, but- I would like to amend the motion to be accepted for that piece of property.
No, 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 that's wrong.
No, I don't think we should have the authen-, it says continuing authority, I don't think we should have continuing authority. Well, um, the-
You should have authority to buy that piece of property.
The, the way to word that, if I may suggest, would be that the electors authorize a grant of authority to the town board to purchase a piece of property for Crystal River access in the town of Dayton.
Get covered by a DNR grant.
Uh, I don't, I don't know that that's, uh, that would be a proper-
Then I'll go back to my original, original one.
So you're withdrawing your, your amendments?
Well, you said-
Well, you cut daddy's foot.
So, somebody decide.
Okay.
I may be wrong, but I believe I read this recently in the state statute, that one of the ways that the town can purchase property is by the electors at this meeting. I believe the other way is by a referendum, which would allow a lot more people to be there. If I'm wrong, let me know, otherwise, we guess.
I, I believe you're wrong.
Well, that runs here with the statute.
Uh, the, the, the other way to purchase a property for park purposes, uh, which would include lake access, is to form a parks committee of the town board. The town, the parks committee then would have, uh, authorization under state statutes as a parks committee to purchase park properties. That is the other way.
Where's the state statute? So we can hear it.
Just please know that next year, we will not have the elections that we had this year, and to have an election and a referendum is quite costly for the township.
Because the town would actually have to bear the brunt of the entire thing.
Chris, have you discussed your desire to purchase this property with the town plan commission?
Uh, we discussed lake access, uh, river access with the, uh, town plan commission. Uh, we discussed generating a plan for future, uh, access improvements, but, um, we're waiting some, uh, some information from, uh, Brian Brown, and, uh, I expect that that'll be before the town planning commission in the next several months.
I think this is surely a matter for the town plan commission.
The, the authority to purchase property is not an authority of the town planning commission.
No, but whether to purchase property truly is.
The, the, whether to purchase property is a responsibility of the electors and the town board. Yes, sir.
Sir, um, the DNR grant you talked about, that reimburses for the cost of the property, that's something we have to apply for and have the DNR come out and check on? I mean, they have to do their assessment of it to make sure it's gonna fall inside the guidelines of that, that grant?
Yes.
That's something we would obviously do before we first purchase the land, so that we know we're gonna get reimbursed for that, correct?
Well, and the town would also have a, a DNR regulated appraisal done, so we would know both what the DNR would provide and what donations would be required to, to, uh-
Do you anticipate that being a hundred percent grant?
Yes. Well, I'm sorry, not a hundred percent grant, but between grant and, and donations.
Do you anticipate getting the full amount of that property?
One hundred percent, yes.
Then, then that's the way the, it should be only for that piece of property? Shouldn't be for cart, cart lunch or anything else, sir?
Well-
Which, which that does state.
And, and I tried to offer that as a substitute motion, would you like me to make another attempt?
Sure.
Okay.
Withdraw your mo-, to make it easier for, for Judy, I would ask that you withdraw your motion, and you withdraw your second, and then you proceed with making a motion. That makes it a whole lot easier.
I will, I will make a motion, hopefully that alleviates your, your questions.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. So, wait. And, and would you withdraw your second also?
I thought it was a fine motion, and I'd like to vote on it.
Alright.
But for the sake of moving things forward, I will withdraw.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right here. You very carefully crafted the question, I assume with a purpose. And you pointed out initially that it didn't have anything to do with the dam, didn't have anything to do with the road landing, because in your opinion, a purchase requires something other than equipment. There is consideration in acquiring the property. So you don't believe that the people are involved in if we acquire the dam or if we acquire a road landing and all, as somebody mentioned, what's going forward from that day? Is that why you drafted this, this way, rather than just bring it up to one parcel? I mean, you just seem to think that if somebody gives you, we, we take. Okay? You call that no consideration. I call it consideration, because whatever we take, we're on the hook for it from that day forward. Kind of like if we took a deed for the land, for the land. What's that?
Well, this, this actually came about, um, the statute has been on the books for many, many years. Worded the way that the question is under sixty dash, uh, tenth, um, this town hall property was purchased twenty years ago. And that was done without a discussion at a town board meeting. It was done without a authorization by the electors. And I'm trying to make sure that if we purchase something, that it is done properly.
Chris.
And...
What, what dollar amount are we talking here? A thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars? Can you surely share that amount?
Uh, the, the amount that is, uh, is being asked for the property with river access is fifty thousand dollars.
How many acres?
Okay.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Look, look, I'm, I'm going to take one more question, and then I've been asked to state, restate that question, so I would like to do that next.
I'd just like to ask, isn't this land adjacent to a present town park?
I don't think it's proper to answer that right now. Okay. So I will make motion that the electors authorize a grant of authority for the town board to purchase a property with Crystal River access within the town, uh, in the year 2015, with the monies for that, um, purchase to come from DNR grant funds and donations.
I will second that. You have a question, Chris?
Please.
I make a motion and we'll have to vote.
Okay. Would everybody be okay with a and vote on this question?
Yeah.
Okay. Did everybody get this question? Can you reread it? Okay. That the electors authorize a grant of authority for the town board to purchase a property with access to the Crystal River in 2015, with those funds to come from DNR grant funds and donations.
You included originally, you included property in the town, within the township.
Okay.
It wasn't just anywhere.
What's the exact property?
Yeah. It doesn't matter what you...
As I have said before, the property owner... It hasn't been said yet. And the, and the question has been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand to say yes.
Yes.
We need to come.
Keep your hands up if you are in favor of the motion, please.
Please, one hand only. Okay. Are, are, are counters that moved up, or are we okay? Okay. No votes? That motion is turned down. Uh, penalty was... Forty-nine to thirty-four. Is there any other further motion on that question? Seeing done, we'll move on.
Chris, I have a question on the next item.
Okay. Can I read the item first? Can I read the item first?
Yes, you may.
The item is the electors shall approve the Town of Dayton property tax levy for 2015 fiscal year.
Now I have a question. If it is something somewhat less than that, what happens next year? And how much higher going to go next year?
Can't.
Can't. If it can go down, it can go up.
It goes up by only a referendum. You can only exceed it by referendum. You know, the, the state is continually tinkering with the, uh, property freeze, uh, questions in the state budget. I would be surprised that the law next year is the same as it is this year.
Any other question?
Since this doesn't exactly answer my question.
Since we decreased the budget down to nine forty, what you can spend for roads, we used to be more, probably, um, backing into the number of the nine forty instead of one three, right?
Well, you know, unfortunately, you reduced the transportation budget by three hundred and forty thousand dollars. But that also means that the town is not going to get grants that would have paid for, uh, those items if we eliminate the bridges and culvers out of it. So it's not three hundred and forty thousand dollars less. That means, you know, the total town, um, expenditures or, or net income are going to be down three hundred and forty thousand dollars, because you're also losing all those grant monies.
So, so explain it to me, that's kind of simple. You said you can only spend nine forty, you've got one point three, so you intend to still do everything, and the only way you can do that is to borrow money or take it out of reserve, right?
No, no, no. But, but if you, if we don't spend that money, then we're not going to get the grants.
But, but that's only...
So, so we look, we don't get the bridges done, and we don't get the grants.
But that's only half of what the bridges are costing. So you could do half the bridge.
Well, I, I, you know, the town board will have to take a look at the budget within the expenditure limits that were given to us today, and will make some adjustments. I can't tell you right now if we can do one bridge, one road, three bridges, four bridges, or whatever, until we look at the budget. There are other areas in the transportation budget that can be cut.
Would you further like to be restricted on the mill rate?
You know, that is your option. If, if you think the town would be better off with no mill rate, you know, that is an option, but eventually, someone will pay for that. And if the town board has, has recommended a reduced mill rate, is that, does that mean your taxes are going to go down? No, because Wapaka County has increased their levy. The Wapaka School District has increased their levy. Everyone is increasing their levy because expenses keep going up.
That is not our concern. I don't think taxes are at all our concern. Our concern is, is the expenditures that this town has been making over the last two years that we did not like.
Okay. So, so do you want to make a motion?
I want to hear what Mr. Pagel has to say first.
I guess I, again, I said it before, I will reiterate it. Please, for the betterment of the town, if you don't like what Mr. Klein is doing, Mr. Newsom, myself, vote us out. Please vote us out in April. That, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
What's the date?
Let's get through this meeting first, all right? And, but if you look at the bigger picture of where your tax dollars all go, you said it's not about the tax dollars. Well, everybody's saying, oh, you're spending too much money. Out of every thousand dollars that you paid in property taxes, eighty dollars is coming to the town. If you're really interested in saving tax money, maybe you should look at Mr. Ellis in the back corner. Maybe we should be going to the Fox Valley Tech, um, school board meeting. Maybe we should be going to the state budget meetings. Maybe we should be going to the Wapaka School District meetings. I think you're getting a pretty darn good bang for your buck here. And no matter what peo... Whoever's up front is going to be wrong forty-nine percent of the time. So I'm okay with you voting me out. I'm perfectly fine with that. I don't want to see you tie the hands of whoever's in this office next year. That's all I'm going to say.
Please understand that the mill rate, the state allows us very little wiggle room. If you drop that mill rate, say you want to drop the mill rate down to a dollar twenty-five, and next year you get a town board that you're happy with, you cannot raise the mill rate and you find that you don't have the operating capital that you really need. It will take years for this township to, to come back from that, because the state does not allow you. Years ago, when I first started, they allowed that, and they, and they were seeing it all over the board. You have a mill rate that would be one twenty-five, and then all of a sudden, they go up to one forty. Well, the state stepped in and throw us that. So you cannot make adjustments in your mill rate to recoup big changes.
You can...
And just, no, you can't.
Well...
John, you can't.
You can't. But you can, you can use reserves that aren't spent.
You can do that. But please understand, when I first took this job, come December, I didn't even have enough money in the checking account to pay Wapaka County for snowfall. There were no reserves in this township. And if you look around in, in the town meetings that we go to, well managed, now whether or not you think this township is well managed, they do have reserves to fall back on. You have that to have, just like you operate your own homes. You don't hopefully operate from, you know, paycheck to paycheck, but you do have a reserve to fall back on. The town does need to have reserves. So just please consider that when you decide what you, what you want for the mill rate. It will not, it will give some pleasure in being able to do that, but the township will suffer for it.
The township has a value that the 2014, uh, tax levy or the, uh, mill rate was based upon, correct?
Correct.
And it's approximately what? Three hundred and sixty million?
Yeah.
We just had a new assessment. No, we're in the process of a reassessment. Okay, well, that won't be ready for the ne... in the next two weeks?
No.
No, but that'll be, that'll be for the 2016 tax year. So that'll be decided in the summer of 2015 for the 2016 tax year. Okay.
Well, I don't know. Is, is the mill rate for 2014, a dollar fifty-eight per thousand? Not the mill rate, but is that what the assessment is? A dollar fifty-eight?
No, no, the proposed mill rate...
For fifteen?
For 2015 was, is a dollar fifty-eight per thousand.
Dollar fifty-eight, yeah.
The, the mill rate in 2014 was a dollar sixty-two per thousand. So that's a decrease in the mill rate, uh, of about one and a half percent. I can promise you that your property taxes are going down even if you eliminate the town taxes, because Wapaka County is going up, the Wapaka School District is going up, uh, the vocational schools are going up, and they're going up with much greater dollar amounts than what the Wapaka, the Town of Dayton...
But if we improve the mill rate, you're basically saying that if we improve the dollar fifty-eight per thousand, we have to...
Yeah, the, the motion I would like to entertain is in a dollar amount. The proposed dollar amount was five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And, and that's... And that relates to a dollar fifty-eight per thousand, which is about a one and a half percent decrease from last year. Yes. No, no. I said I would like to hear a motion in the form of a dollar amount.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept or approve the Dayton property...
I, I had recognized Jake.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the dollar fifty-eight per thousand for the year 2015. I would, I wouldn't know what dollar amount to say if it was a motion.
Okay. I, I had asked to state that in the form of a dollar amount, so I will restate that in a dollar amount. She made a motion to, uh, set the property tax levy at five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
What's the five hundred seventy-one?
I'm sorry, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four. And your name is?
Larry Gordon.
Thank you. So the motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, sir?
When you talk about the inability to increase the mill rate, right? The state has had growth and all the rest of it. Well, let's assume zero growth, and we go to one fifty-eight this year, what would be the next year's growth next year? Assuming no growth, no changes, law comes back to the same.
The, the, um, the current law... The, 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 um, the current law says that the town can only increase, uh, I believe it's seventy percent of the new valuation of the town. The town's valuation due to primarily new construction increased by ten million dollars from 2013 to 2014. So, uh, the increase is, is, is based on that.
But with the reassessment, following you, we can see potentially a large increase in values, how much of a lot of the-
No, no, the, the-
It's only a neutralization?
The current property tax freeze set by the state formula is based on a dollar amount. And the assessments are based on a equalized value that the state calculates. So all municipalities, say in the Wapaka School District, have a equalized value based on current sales. So the, the town of Dayton, the equalized value right now is at about a hundred and three percent of the current market value per the state's calculation. So the equalized value can be anywhere a minimum of ninety percent or a maximum of a hundred and ten percent. And then that is equalized in that state formula. So your assessments are equalized against the town of Farmington and the town of Lynn and the city of Wapaka in determining those local property taxes. So the, it's, it's complicated, it's required, it's a exercise the town board has to go through continually. But your assessments, whether they go up or down next year, will not have an effect on your taxes unless they decide that the property on the chain of lakes has gone down and the property on Spencer Lake has gone up, then the people that live on Spencer Lake will have a higher share of the town taxes. But the overall dollar amount across the whole town does not change just because of, of the reassessment. The reassessment is done to equalize those property changes from one area of the town to the other area of the town that happened over now it's almost a ten-year period.
They have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in seconds.
We have a motion in a second.
Call for a question.
Okay, the motion is to set the property tax levy at one fifty-eight per thousand, a decrease from the one sixty-two, and that equates to five hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars as the property tax levy for 2015. A yes vote will, uh, will approve that. A no vote means we keep discussing it. So let's have a bell.
I'm over here.
She paid me.
That's why she told me to get my fat head out.
I didn't use those words.
I'm pleasing, I'm sorry.
Hey, good lunch, please. So everybody can come to order. Uh, the vote to approve the levy at five sixty-five, nine forty-four was seventy-seven yes and nine no's. That is the last item? Um, for the meeting of the towns electors, I'd make a motion to pause.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting of the towns electors.
Uh, have a hand roll, all of the favor, please. The pose. Please take discussions outside. Uh, we still have to have our monthly town board meeting. Uh, the agenda is, is up on the board. Um, call this meeting to order. This is our November, uh, town board meeting. This meeting and all other meetings of the town of Dayton are open to the public. The press has been notified and the agenda has been posted in accordance to statutes. So the citizenry may be aware of the time and the place of the agenda. Time, the place in the agenda of the meeting, I'm sorry. Start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call for his role. Um, I hear a motion to approve or amend the agenda in consideration of the late hour and also the changes made to the town's, uh, budgets.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we suspend all of the topics except for pay the bills for this evening and the treasurer's report, and that we would reconvene on Monday, November-
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah, that's on, right after my dog's back. Yeah, Monday, November twenty-fourth.
At six P M., please?
No, at six or five? Five work for everybody?
Five, Monday at five P M. Uh, Brenda, are you okay with Monday at five?
I don't know, Steve, can I get out early?
No.
Monday at four?
If I can. All right, I'll skip lunch again.
All right. Um, I'll second that.
Aye.
Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, treasurer's report?
Yeah, I'm doing it right now.
Aren't you done with it yet? Well, it's been noon for the last three hours.
Could you really stay with the motion one? We heard you bathrooming over a time, you don't know.
Monday, November twenty-fourth at five P M.
Five. As you can see, as of last Thursday, when I did this, we had in the general account nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-seven. Since that, yesterday, we did receive our November third offering of twenty-three thousand, one twenty, twenty-six. So we can add another, oh.
Everybody okay out there?
Yeah. You can add another twenty-three thousand to that. So right now we got figure forty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars-ish in, um, general account. And that's basically that.
And the check's totaled ninety-five, is that right?
Um, actually, when I ran home, there was another bill for Becker Marine that I paid when I came back here, and that was for two hundred and forty dollars for booty removal. So we have to add two hundred and forty dollars onto the ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and two.
I'll make a motion that we pay tonight's bills of ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents, and that we also transfer from, uh, the First National Bank tax account, uh, six, seventy thousand dollars.
Motion made to pay the bills and transfer seventy thousand dollars into the general checking account. Call those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call those none. And, uh, anything else in the treasurer's report?
No, by this time next month, I'll probably be collecting more money. Whether you pay me or not, I'll be, well, I had some to pay that line of taxes. Had people call me, one ran up their bills.
Okay, uh, all other items, uh, by, uh, the amended agenda, we will not act on tonight. We will reconvene Monday at five P M., uh, at the date of town hall, uh, to act on the other items and the changes to the 2015 town budget.
That's November tw- twenty-fourth?
November twenty-fourth, yes, at five P M. Okay, move to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.